Meeting of the Town of Southampton Planning Board. This is the board's first meeting via video conferencing in accordance with the Governor's Order 202.1. So we will be proceeding a little differently from our typical meetings. Until further notice, all of the board's meetings will be held remotely. So we ask the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. There are also options on the website for public comment and to pre-register to speak on public meetings. So please consider that for all future meetings. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only, please do not join the Zoom meeting. Please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the planning board from the meeting group dropdown menu on the left, and click on the live link at the top of the page. If you wish to be heard during a meeting but do not pre-register, please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the planning board from the meeting group dropdown menu on the left, click on the agenda button for May 14th, which will give you information required to join the Zoom meeting. If you do not wish to be heard during a meeting but would like to submit written comments for the record, please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the planning board from the meeting group.
I don't know what to do.
On the left, and click on the yellow public comments button. Fill out the form and your comments will be made part of the record. We have five public hearings this evening. And we have applicants and members of the public standing via Zoom, which is being moderated by Charles Certain, CTV. We'll be muting and holding the speakers in a virtual waiting room until it's their time to give testimony before the board. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking should state their name and address for the record. Board members who must recuse themselves from an application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Unless otherwise stated, at the end of each hearing, all these applications will remain open for written comments from the applicant and the public for 30 days. Those comments can be addressed to the board, secretary, and sent via email, mail, or dropped off at Town Hall. Additionally, in accordance with the Governor's Order, these hearings will be recorded and transcribed and will be made available to the public. So with that, please join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which stands one nation.
And indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving then, the agenda items, the public hearing number one is the Noyac Golf Club. Phil?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have jurisdiction. And in addition, I'd just like to note for the record that we also have an additional affirmation from the applicant's representative indicating that the property was reposted and letters were sent to adjacent property owners advising them of this evening's planning board meeting via video conference.
Great, thank you. And who is Reece Claire? Are you reading this?
Yes. Please take notice that in accordance of the town code, the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Town of Southampton Planning Board on Thursday, April 9, 2020, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan application entitled "New York Noyac Golf Club Teaching Facility." The site plan application is for a new maintenance environmental center building and teaching facility associated with an existing golf course located in the CR 120 and the CR 200 zoning district situated in the Aqua Protection Overly District located at 2600 Noyac Road, Hammond of Noyac, Suffolk County, Taxentet Number 900-185.2, by order of the planning board of the Town of Southampton, the Chief Secretary.
Madam Chair, I want to note for the record that we have six members in attendance with one absent board member, Blaney.
Thank you, Phil. Now, who is speaking to this? Is this Tony? Who's representing this application? Claire, do we know?
Yes, Tony Panza, he's coming on.
Tony, okay.
Tony, just identify yourself, okay?
Yeah, and Jesse Smith, who's the General Manager at Noyac Golf Club, is also on in case any questions.
Thank you. Give an overview, a brief overview of the application?
Yes.
I'm gonna share the screen, just a second. Could you connect me, Charles? Thanks.
Yes, you are.
This is just the aerial and there's site plans. I'll put the aerial up first while he talks. If he speaks about something specific, I'll go to it, okay?
Thank you.
Noyac Golf Club. Well, I want to say first, thank you to the planning board and to the town for working on trying to do these Zoom meetings. This is wonderful to try to keep, you know, things rolling along in difficult times. So thank you very much for that, and the club thanks you. The club is proposing two small buildings. One is a teaching facility. It's approximately 2,000 square feet, and it would be located at the base of the driving range, which on the image in front of you there is, if you go back to the aerial, it might be, yeah, it's at the south edge of the parking lot, and the parking lot's centrally located there all the way down. And right at the base of the driving range. This is a 2,000-square-foot building. It's single-story slab-on-grade. It's located on the T of the range, and it's a place where the pro and others can go inside of hit balls out onto the range. 19-foot-high building. It sits nine feet below the crest of a hill. It's right next to it. So it's really, it's a minimal view of this building, if at all. Once I describe the other building, I'll just let you know about the, if you, oops, the, that building there is located 800 feet from the property line. So it's considerable distance from the property line. And it's shingle, side walls with the white trim asphalt shingle roof. That's the structure there. It's in keeping with the architecture of the area. You can see on the left side of that image, the building goes into the slope. So we're trying to minimize the view of this building as much as possible. And shingle, as I mentioned, shingle style. You're just two garage doors out the back. Those open up so you can hit out onto the range and incoming weather. The second building is an environmental center, and that is located at the existing turf care area. Maybe if you go to the aerial, Claire, some of the technical drawings are a little too technical.
Yes, here.
Yes, that's the existing building there. And what we tried to do with this project is to locate it to the left of that building. So it's hidden behind an existing building. The existing building has a 21-foot-high roof, and the new building would have a 16-foot eight-high roof. So that the, any neighbors on the property line there that you see on the above of the drawing, which is 352 feet to the property line, this building would not be seen. It would be shielded. Again, it's only 16 feet six. This is a 2,225-square-foot building. It's a slab-on-grade. And the emphasis for this building is it's an environmental center. What we're looking to do is to take operations which are right now located in different buildings and bring them to one building constructed with modern techniques which are environmentally conscious. One of the main items inside this building, that image there, you see the tanks on the right-hand side in gray. That's a carb troll wash water system. So the vehicles would come back from mowing the grass. They would park on the covered slab. They would use a hose to rinse them off. All of that water would go back into those pumps. It's basically a large pool filtration system, but it uses a carbon-based filter. And you continually wash the vehicles throughout the season with the same water. And that way, you're not using any new water, and none of this rinse is going to the ground and eventually to the water table. So it's a completely self-contained system. We would also move the current fuel pumps which are in the middle of the site. We would move them up underneath this covered area, and they would also be connected to this wash system. And if there was ever a drip or anything else, or when they're filling up a vehicle, anything spills, again, this carb troll system, because it's carbon-based, it can absorb that and recycle it. So we're looking to meet or actually exceed the Suffolk County requirements for storage of fuels and fertilizers for the golf course. One other item I'd like to point out with this, and Claire, if you don't mind going back to the first site plan, not the aerial view.
Sure.
In that there, yeah, in, in putting in the environmental building, there's going to be a, some disturbance of existing vegetation. And what the club is proposing to do is to replant that disturbed area in another portion of the golf course. And that's right there where Claire has pointed. It's a southeast corner. That's near an existing disturbed area which was the site of a previous application, maybe five or six, seven years ago. And the club is not going to be, that, this project that we're suggesting now does away with that project. So there would be no need for constructing, if you recall, there was some storage bins that would be placed up there. And to show that the club would not be doing that, they wanted to replant this area. And that's about 4,600 square feet of replanted shrubs and trees up in that area. That's a very quick overview. Some of the drawings, obviously, in the set are quite technical in terms of storm drainage and replanting and making sure that all the drywells and everything are there. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer any of them.
So the, in the area that you're revegetating?
Yes.
The subject of a prior application, that was the area that was closer to the residences along that line, is that correct?
Yeah, you can see the property line right there. It was right up against the property line. And so, again, it's.
So that'll be revegetated with some vegetation.
Yes. Yep.
Question about the, you're abandoning some other fuel oil tanks or filling tanks?
Relocating. There are, I believe, two fuels, above-ground storage tanks. They're located just to the north of the existing facility. They're outside. They're permitted by Suffolk County Department of Health. They, but they are outside, and we'd like to put them not inside of a building but underneath a roof on a covered slab. This is just, it goes to the highest level of environmental protection.
No, it's still, but it's above ground going to above ground.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
But it'd be in a fully contained area.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Do we have people in the waiting room to speak?
Yes. This is Arthur Eisenberg, and I'm the owner of 2797 Deerfield Road. I'm with my wife Susan Engel. And I had, we had about four questions to ask of Tony. The first, the first has to do with the maintenance facility and what will be housed in that maintenance facility?
In the new building?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the, well, part of the new building is a covered outdoor slab. So there's nothing there. That's just the wash area. The next portion of it is the, it contains the equipment which houses the wash water system to wash on that pad. And then there will be storage for equipment such as the sprayers, which are currently in a different building.
And the mowers as well?
The mowers, no, they would not, they would remain in the building that they're in.
Okay.
Okay. And the, the training center that you described, is that a facility that could be used as a party room?
No, no. It has two hitting bays. So it has hitting mats, a bunch of screens. It's golf technology.
Okay. So we wouldn't anticipate hearing any noise or from that?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
Two more questions. Assuming this is all approved, what would be the duration of construction?
And where to start?
Um, to start, I would say, given the situation that we're in right now under COVID-19, there's a lot of questions that are up in the air in terms of economics and when people can build. So the, the previously discussed would be that one project would be done this fall, and the second project would be done the following fall. Each are about five months, but these would be, you know, something like October, November, December, January, February, when, when no one's around.
And thank you. And then, and then the final question we have to have has to do with the lighting, because we now see through the woods, and it's about two acres. And the golf course is on the other side of our house, which is, and there are about two acres of woods between us. We now see three big lights. Are those, have those been put up in anticipation of construction or for some particular reason? We've never seen them before this winter, and now we are seeing.
Uh, I'm, I can't say that I know the specifics of those three. Are you, you're on Wildwood Road, so you're on the east side of the woods?
We're, we're off Deerfield. It's no road.
Yeah, we're, we're on Deerfield. And you're, you're our neighbor, I guess, to the east. And we see them through the woods.
Yeah, there's something like three to five lights, and they're fairly bright.
I'd have to look into it. The, both of these buildings, if you're on the west of Noyac, you certainly wouldn't see because of the elevation change. So the buildings that you're seeing would be the existing clubhouse, which is up at, at that elevation.
We're not seeing buildings. We're seeing lights. And they're like individual kind of spotlights.
I think we need staff out there to, to take a visit, is a good point.
All right, thank you.
So we know where you live, so we can take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Light needs to be performance. So if they have non-conforming lights, we would make that part of our decision. So it's a good point to bring in.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, the next person to speak. Do we have anyone else waiting in the, in the waiting room to speak to this application? Any more questions?
Joanne wants to speak.
Right. Hi there. My name is Joanne McDonough, and I live on Wildwood. Thank you for this opportunity to, to be part of the conversation. My question is really around the impact on Wildwood Road in general. So especially on season, there is a significant amount of traffic, often speeding down the road and becoming unsafe. What's the impact on traffic? Do we expect more people to be visiting the golf course and traffic to get worse? Or is this a added benefit for people that are already part of the club?
That's correct. Well, the one is a, is an environmental building which is strictly for staff, which is existing staff. So that has no, no impact on traffic. The second building, the teaching facility, is just for, for members. And it would be members that are currently either playing golf or using the driving range. So it's, this is completely a member amenity. No additional traffic would be looked at for going into the facility.
Got it. So it won't get worse, but you may have more, the same amount of people going more often?
Um, the same amount of people going more often. I think that you may see, when you say more often, maybe in January or February, if, you know, where someone wouldn't have gone there, maybe they would. I don't think that you would see any additional in the summer months, because they're already going to play.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
John Crane.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? Hi.
Yep.
I can hear you.
All right, very good. I was trying to put the video on as well. I'm not sure if you're controlling.
All right, we got you.
Okay, that's great. All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to, let me just hit this start my video button. Thank you for the opportunity to participate this evening, and congratulations on what appears to be a good start to using Zoom for the planning board. I have a few questions. And Tony, if you could, I may have missed your, I may have missed your introduction in terms of your role here. Are you, are you the architect or are you the, with the club?
I'm the architect.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, so if I could ask you a couple of questions that they may not be pertaining to the architecture though, and it's to follow up on a question from Joanne McDonough. What, what will preclude the club from using the new indoor facility to provide services to non-members? I wouldn't think that that was, that was one for you, Tony, but I'm not sure who does control access to this, particularly in the off-season. I would imagine club pros who have time, it's a nice facility, peak golfers, I'm sure would like to get out and be able to access that facility. But I'm just curious, who governs that? Is that, is that at your discretion?
No, well, this is a membership club. There are, there's rules for guests. So if it's in, the rules that say govern in August, where you might not be able to, allowed to have a guest, or if you're going to play, you're, you know, you're, you're going with a member. The teaching facility has not been discussed to be used by anyone outside of a, of a member, or if you're there as a guest of a member because you're with the member. So this isn't, this is not an outside for-profit entity. It's strictly a member benefit. Instead of the member hitting from the driving range tee, they can hit from inside the building out.
Yeah, no, I understand the concept, and I understand the original intention of it. But organizations evolve, leadership within clubs change. And for, for the protection of the neighbors, maybe it's a question for the planning board, who regulates something like this that the club pro couldn't have training sessions going every day during the off-season or on rainy days? And that this becomes something that today, Tony, I appreciate your, probably everyone's being sincere and saying this wouldn't happen here in 2020. But what's to safeguard us as Wildwood Road residents and homeowners that this isn't going to turn into something that wasn't intended to be? And in that event, who actually regulates that? I don't, is that, is that the jurisdiction of the planning board, or tonight, your, your work is done after this evening, and then it becomes code enforcement?
I would think that that's a business decision that's specific to the golf club and perhaps would be code enforcement.
Yeah, I agree, Jackie. I actually just want to weigh in a little bit. Is, it would be tied to the use. The use is a membership club if they start to have people who are not members and.
Claire, follow-up question to that point. Is there, what was the document that you referred to or the agreement that gives them the privilege, the rights to operate the private club? Is there something that's?
CEO, a certificate of occupancy that says it's a private.
Thank you. Does a certificate of occupancy have any constraints on the number of members?
That I don't know.
Is that something that you can find out?
It's part of your comments, sure. We can include it as a part of your comment.
And the reason I ask, the reason I ask is, as a, as a longtime resident, and by way of introduction, I was, I was here at this board meeting five years ago, and it's very good to hear that, Tony, that, that plan to build the, the structure behind my home has been taken off the table. So that's the good news this evening, and we very much appreciate it for those of us who live in that vicinity. Just by, by way of introduction, without boring you too much, my family built the house on Wildwood Road in 1961, prior to the construction of the, of the golf course. So my family's actually been there longer than the golf course. And throughout the decades, there have been promises made, promises broken with regards to that golf course, what they intend to do and what.
Mr. Corrine, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we're talking about Shinnecock. We're not talking about Noyac.
No, yeah, we're talking about Noyac.
No.
We're talking about Noyac.
Are we not?
Noyac, we're talking about Noyac.
All right, I'm sorry.
And I just received the information that there is a stipulation on the, on the club of 285 members.
Thank you very much. Where is that documented, if I may ask?
I believe it's documented as Claire had mentioned. I just received it from the General Manager.
Okay, thank you. I see.
What I, what I would pass along is that in terms of the number, clubs generally self-regulate themselves, because as, if membership were to increase, the, the wait time for the ability to get a tee time becomes much more difficult, and especially on the weekend. So, yeah, very few clubs that I've ever known that I work with would void their bylaws for the town department.
Yeah, no, thank you, Tony, for that, that background. Does, does that mean then that the club has 285 members now? And maybe that question is for Claire or for Jesse? And how, how would we as neighbors know? We, I think what you heard from Joanne, and I think most of us who live on Wildwood Road could attest to it, that the traffic coming in and out of Noyac Golf Club is, is much more than it's ever been historically. Just for the, for a little more edification of the board who may not be familiar with Noyac Golf Club, it is situated uniquely. So unlike Mr. Keith was saying with Shinnecock Golf Club, which really isn't accessed through a residential neighborhood, when the golf course was developed, as opposed to putting the main entrance on Noyac Road, which is a main thoroughfare, which in hindsight would have been much better, the club chose to put the entrance on Wildwood Road, which means that the members, the 285 members, their guests and families, are entering the club and exiting the club on, through a residential neighborhood, a relatively small residential block. In addition to the members who enter and exit the course, all of their suppliers and contractors enter and exit their course through Wildwood Road. So there, if, there's, I would say, I'm hypersensitive to any development at the golf course, because it inevitably ends up to be a threat to our quiet, our quality of life, our personal safety in some cases, and certainly our property values. So I appreciate you hearing me out on this thing, because I know you, you got very serious jobs to play on this. And I think generally speaking, you know, that the construction of a 2,000-square-foot building on a golf course seems reasonable enough. The addition of a maintenance building adjacent to an existing maintenance building seems reasonable enough. And I think, Tony, quite candidly, I think you did a good job at allaying some of the concerns I had about both of those two buildings. Which brings us back to the third issue of the, of the pit, where you're going to re, where you're going to revegetate that pit. If you could, Claire, if you'd be so kind as to put that map back up, the drawing of what's going to happen at the pit. Because I'd like to get, I'd like to get Tony's input and Jesse's. Because I'd, I'd like to get, um, I'd, I'd like to get, uh, Tony's input and Jesse's input in terms of that pit area. If you are, my, my family's home is at the top right corner of that, if you see that property line. I don't think what you can see on this lot, on this picture particularly well, is that there is a, a piece of land adjacent to my property. That when the development went in in 1961, that was a, intended to be a drainage pit. Uh, the golf course subsequently bought that, that strip of land from the developer Oliver and Clark. But what they've done over the past several years as, as opposed to using it as a lot of land, they've created a driveway to the pit. And for those of you that, that, we, we've referred to that area as a pit for a while because over the years it's been, it's been, uh, an area of great concentrate, uh, controversy. Uh, in terms of what's stored back there, the hours of access to that. And, um, I'd like to get some input from, from Tony and Jesse and then subsequently from the, from the board in terms of with the re-vegetation of that area. That, uh, we can come to some agreement that the use of that land that's, that ceased to be used as a driveway because it's, it's not zoned as a driveway. It's not zoned as a road. And, and yet the golf course uses it for heavy equipment, transporting materials in and out to that area between two residential properties. And that is a problem. So I'm wondering if Jesse and Tony is in your request for a site change. If you can also stipulate what your intentions are to do with that plot of land.
The, the area that you were describing as a, between the two lots as a detention basin, uh, I think that's been mischaracterized. That was a, from the initial, uh, understanding of this property that I know of is that there was three access points or right of ways. And, and that is why, um, for instance, there is a sign posted there for this meeting. Because the town recognizes it as one of the access points or right of ways. So that's what that piece is there. It's, it's not wide enough for a drainage basin. The, um, I know that, uh, since the, this, the previous project, five or six years ago came up. Uh, I wasn't involved with that, but I know that the club has worked hard to change some of the times of day that they're doing things and the amount of use to it. But I, I do not see as part of this application that they would be closing off that access point.
And then I, then I would ask the board, the planning board, in terms of quid pro quo for the privilege of the club to expand their operations with the construction of two additional buildings. One of which is going to extend the season for the golf club and create, I, I would respectfully submit additional hardship for the residents of Wildwood Road. Because that means that there is going to be traffic in the off season, which historically has been a time of, of relative peace and quiet for the neighbors. In addition, it's going to extend the use of the golf course to days, rainy days. Where traditionally you won't have golf traffic, but now you will, most likely. So I, I would ask, I would ask the board members, uh, Mrs. Chairwoman, if I could, is it, is it within your purview to ask the golf course in this case to, uh, to offer up more than they've offered up now on that redevelopment of the pit?
Well, right now at the public hearing, I would offer you guidance to put your concerns in writing to.
I have, I have, Mr. Chairman, I've, I've submitted those to Claire Shea.
Okay. So they're in the record and we will read them and discuss them. So.
Okay. Claire, you, you, you have those, right? Those are in the record?
I've seen it. I've seen your letter.
Okay, thank you. And, and included in that letter was also the original development, the site plan from 1961, when Oliver and Clark developed Wildwood Road, which is prior to the construction of the golf course. So I think it'll give you a little bit of historical context. I also included some photographs, some from Google Maps to, to give you a little bit of perspective for the proximity to the two residential homes adjacent to it. But in addition to the residential homes there on the golf course, there are residential homes on the opposite side of the street that are impacted by those trucks because Wildwood Road is not a very wide street. And the size of those construction vehicles that go in and out of there, they are very large. So.
Put it, put it, if I could jump in for a second, if, if that access was not reviewed or approved by this board as part of the original site plan or in the subsequent amendment, uh, they are, they are not allowed to use that as an access. When we, when we establish access points, it gets reviewed by our engineering department. There's appropriate drainage, stabilization, so forth. So they, if the course took it upon themselves to just, you know, start using that because it's could be replaced, then, then that, we, we will have to take action against that.
Thank you, Mr. Finity. I, I am very glad to hear that. Um, unless, unless Tony or Jesse can, can convince us otherwise, that I do not believe, and we've done a lot of research on any filings pertaining to that lot. For, for those of you who have been on the board for a while, for, for a period of time, that lot was actually owned by Suffolk County Department of Parks. So that had been deemed county parkland. And I'm not going to bore you with all the details tonight, but somehow that plot of land went from being county parkland to ownership by the golf club, which subsequently then made it a, Mr. Finity, if you would please tell me what the term is that I could use it properly going forward. What's the?
And, and, uh, an access point.
Thank you. An access point. So that, that the golf course has taken it upon themselves to use that as an access point. And not just any access point, but an access point for the heaviest equipment that they use at the golf course to do land clearing, to bring in top soils, fertilizers, whatever. It's, it's, I, I've, I've extended this invitation before to board members. I'm not sure if it's the same board today as it was five years ago. But it, the, the condition of that property behind our home is it, it's a dumping ground. And there's, there's no other way to describe it. Uh, what the golf course has done to shield their own members from it is they've reconfigured the green behind our home, which is beautiful, to, uh, to prevent the members from even seeing it. So they've, they've regraded that whole area so that the only ones who can see the pit are the adjacent homeowners.
Okay. Well, I know that several board members, when this, uh, that maintenance area was up on the agenda, we'd made site visits and actually saw what you're talking about. So.
Yes. And if you can imagine that the problem that we have is the, not, not only is it used for materials that we have no, we, we don't know what's back there. I, I'll bore you with one more detail. In, in the early seventies, the people on Wildwood Road had to abandon their wells because of chemicals used. And I'll, I'll, I'll put it in the category of ignorance. People didn't know. But the water pollution that was caused by the golf course because of chemicals that were used back then, probably not uncommon, but we were victimized by it then. Uh, I would say what we're victimized by now with that pit being operational is that the hours of operation, they start very early at that pit sometime before six o'clock in the morning to move materials in and out of there. So I, I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that. And I, I just wanted to provide you with a little background in terms of, we try to be good neighbors. Uh, the golf course is a beautiful place, but we live there. And we would ask that the board to please give consideration to the resident taxpayers on Wildwood Road. And, um, if the, if the golf course is asking for this change to the site plan, that they make some accommodations, again, in the spirit of give and take, that they maybe solve a longstanding problem for the neighbors on Wildwood Road.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Thanks. Tony, you heard that?
Yes. Um, it, as I mentioned, um, that access point, uh, was in the original. We'll, we'll get the proper material to the board so they can see it. And, and as I mentioned it as an access point that the board would know about because the planning department asked us to place a sign there as one of the four signs for this meeting. So if it wasn't a, um, a previously approved access point, the signage wouldn't have been requested for that spot. So we'll get the site plan information there.
Tony, just so you know, I'm pretty familiar with that map. Those, those strips were actually originally laid out as roads, paper roads. Some have been acquired privately, some have been sold to the county who then subsequently resells them back to property owners. But that's probably why you were required to post that because on the original filing of, of Wildwood Road, that was, that, that was a stub road.
Right. That, that access road was in question a few years ago. But anyway, let's try to resolve it and get the necessary paperwork so we can address Mr. Crane's issue and all the other people on Wildwood Road. Is there someone else, Charles, waiting to speak on this application?
I don't think so at the moment. I put a question out. No one answered it. So I don't think so.
Okay.
Madam, madam chair, I do have one written comment. If you'd like me to read that into the record?
Yes.
Okay, this is dated, um, May 11th, 2020, to whom it may concern. I recently received a letter from the town of Southampton inviting me as a resident on Wildwood Road with property abutting Noack Golf Course to attend a public meeting regarding a proposed construction project that the club is considering. Due to the current COVID-19 health advisory and personal health concerns, I'm submitting this letter of support rather than attending the hearing. I've been a homeowner on Wildwood Road for 20 years. It's been my observation that in recent years, the staff has taken on ambitious endeavors to improve the appearance of the property. Of course for members, but also for adjacent homeowners like me. It is my understanding that a goal of one of the new projects to be discussed at the town meeting is to establish a wash station protocol for cleaning equipment that recycles water and reduces the amount of nitrogen produced by grass clippings that event, that would eventually seep into the water table and bay. From an environmental perspective, I support this intention to be better stewards of our precious land. It is also my understanding that the superintendent of Noack Golf Club participates in a program called First Green, which brings students from their local schools in to learn about managing turf and the positive effects it has on the environment. As a former teacher, principal and school superintendent, I am always delighted to hear of such public-private partnerships. Would finally add that although it is not a factor in these specific deliberations, it is worth noting that the club staff who we have met have been extremely polite and accommodating neighbors. Thank you. Yours truly, Peter P. Heaney, Jr., 115 Wildwood Road.
Thanks, Kathleen. Um, Tony, do you have anything more to say? Otherwise we'll try to close the hearing here with a 30-day written comment period.
Nothing additional.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close this with a 30-day written comment period? By Gloria, a motion, second by Dennis, all in favor. Close, extension, six in favor, one absent. Okay, we're moving on to number two, Oceanside Enterprises, Inc., Lot 1, Hamlet of Shinnecock Hills.
Madam Chair, the board does have jurisdiction. And again, for the record, um, if you could just indulge me, the applicant has submitted an additional affirmation indicating that the property was reposted and letters were sent to adjacent property owners advising them of this evening's planning board meeting via video conference.
Great. Who, who will be reading the notice? Uh, Jackie, are you reading it? You're muted. Jackie?
I'm muting, sorry.
Can, do you want to read the public notice?
Yes, I will. I'm just bringing it up on my computer. Please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, March 26, 2020, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the covenant amendment application, um, entitled Oceanside Enterprises, Lot 1. The applicant's request to amend, the applicant's request to amend a covenant to allow for further subdivision. The subject parcel is a 2.364 acre property situated within the R40 zoning district, situated in the New York State archeologically sensitive areas and listed on the CPF priority list located at 264 Shinnecock Hills Road, within the hamlet of Shinnecock Hills. Suffolk County Tax Mountain Number 900-209-1-17.16. By order of the planning board of the town of Southampton, Philly, Phil Keats, Secretary.
Uh, Daphne, are you representing this application?
Yes. Hello, Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning for the owner.
Go ahead.
Okay. So as Jackie indicated, this is also known as Lot 1 of the Oceanside Enterprises subdivision, uh, which was filed in November of 1981. The current zoning is R40, which is the same zoning at the time of subdivision. The entire property is 2.364 acres or 102,957 square feet. Uh, we are here because the goal of my clients is to file a two-lot subdivision on the property. So the CNRs that were filed with the original subdivision, uh, in 1981 stated that at no time hereafter shall there be any further subdivision or modifications parcels one and two as herein described and as approved by the planning board of the town of Southampton. Part of the, uh, package that I originally submitted contained a concept sketch plan which shows that the lot can yield two lots that would conform to the R40 zoning district. Uh, with Lot 1 proposed at 1.091 acres and Lot 2 shown with 1.273 acres. And both lots would have adequate road frontage and, uh, lot width. Uh, building permit was issued on the parcel in July of 2007, 2019, sorry, uh, for a new single-family residence with associated accessory, accessory structures, which is currently under construction. I think Jackie had some pictures up that I submitted to show the existing, uh, property. There's the development. And you can see the, uh, the clearing that has been done on the property in this photo. So that project, uh, is, as you can see, almost complete. And the, if this was to be subdivided, that those structures would comply with the R40 setbacks on the, uh, the lot line that we're showing.
So this, where we're seeing the clearing, is that the second lot?
Yeah, that would be the, the, uh, western side of the property. Which would be where the second lot would, would be proposed.
So it's already been cleared without subdivision approval?
Yeah, it was cleared under the building permit. They do have a SWIP on the property and they have been working closely with the town engineer's office. Uh, they've had a number of inspections done and meetings with Tom Houghton from the town engineer.
Daphne, did you say there was a, uh, there was a covenant on the original parcel that prevented further subdivision of this lot?
Yeah, I did, uh, review the original subdivision file. And, um, I did submit a number of documents that were associated with the file. And I think Jackie had some of them up, but there were, uh, requests to the Suffolk County Planning Commission back in 1981. Uh, because the parcels loaded, excuse me, located within 500 feet of, uh, Route 27. So in the referral, the town, to the town, the, uh, the county requested that a covenant, the covenant be required, uh, for, no for the subdivision of parcels one and two. And, um.
Daphne, is this the letter you're referring to?
Yes. Yes. That was the county's response to the town, the town's referral request. Basically saying that no lot should be subdivided or lot lines changed in any matter unless authorized by the Southampton.
Uh, your, um, dessert is in the freezer.
Glad to know that.
So basically there was correspondence from, between the town and the county, and they both had agreed. Uh, they'd know for the subdivision clause on lots one and two. Lot three was a much larger lot, which, uh, was further subdivided. I think what, what it was is that at the time of subdivision, there was not an official roadway. that was completed. So that couldn't have been accomplished until the road was put in for
So no further subdivision unless approved by the planning board, correct?
Yeah.
Is that what it says, Jackie? Sorry.
I don't have the exact wording in front of me.
Do you have that, the letter?
Yeah.
Scroll back to the letter?
Sure.
It's a letter from
Okay. Unless authorized, no, that was it. Okay, unless authorized. Okay, so Lot 1 gives us this board, our board authority to, to subdivide. Is that correct?
Daphne, do you have the language of the covenant? I do have it in the resolution, but I will just have to bring it up.
I have the covenant. Hold on. Let me find it. I have the map right in front of me. And it should mimic the covenant, but I'm finding the covenant right now.
Can I just get some chronology here? So it's already been cleared. Building has been started, but the covenant has not been amended.
The, technically, this property does not have clearing restrictions. It could be entirely cleared. They could proceed with putting additional buildings on this as one lot. They could put a tennis court, you know, they, they could, they could essentially be developing majority of the property. They chose to concentrate the development of this house on the eastern side of the property in hopes of obtaining a subdivision.
But did you, but this lies within the archaeological, archaeological sensitive area. In the New York State archeologically sensitive area, Shinnecock Hills.
Okay, I did find.
So was there any response to that?
Well, I think, Madam, Madam Chair, if I may, at this point, there's not, there's not yet legislation saying that you cannot simply clear within that archaeological area. That will be considered shortly by the town board. It's, the public hearing has been adjourned due to COVID, but it has been scheduled. But in terms of just simply clearing the property, I don't think that there's any prohibitions at this time.
I don't think I was inferring clearing independent of the fact that this clearing and building with what appears to be an intention of treating this as two lots and proceeding with this as two lots before we saw an application. It seems that the, we're putting the, the, the order of this seems a little strange. So I mean, these people don't intend to just clear this property, build this structure without dividing the property. I mean, you can't sell this other house.
Have, there's no, there's no second building permit been issued so far, correct?
Well, I'm not sure.
They couldn't be.
Right.
You can't, you can't put two dwellings on one parcel.
Right.
So they may have cleared in anticipation of the subdivision, or if that's not, doesn't go through, they may put a pool cabana, tennis court, a sports facility, whatever.
Right. There's nothing precluding them from putting other structures on the property.
Did you find that covenant, Daphne?
Yes, I did. I can read it right now. So it's clause number one of the covenant. It says that at no time hereafter shall there be any further subdivision of or modification to parcels 1 and 2 as herein described and as approved by the planning board of the town of Southampton.
Okay, that's no further.
That's no further subdivision.
That's no subdivision.
It has clause number six, which says that the within declaration may not be annulled, waived, changed, or modified unless until all approved resolution of the planning board of the town of Southampton.
We've kind of been down this road before.
Yeah, we've had this discussion.
Yes. We had, we had another public hearing, Daphne, I remember.
Yeah.
There. And we, we, we looked at the covenant, or the covenant was not, I can't remember the detail of it, but
This is the first hearing on this application. You're thinking of another application.
A very similar situation.
Yes.
Very similar.
But it does say that it can be changed by, by the planning board, basically.
Yes.
So it's not saying that the planning board does not have authority to change it. And that's why we're here. We're here seeking your approval to change that such that this could be subdivided into two conforming lots.
Well, is the, similar to the prior application, what we typically do in these requests is ask the applicant to, the applicant, put the onus on the applicant to go back and find out what conditions prompted the filing of that covenant and how, and why those conditions are no longer relevant to the existing property.
Well, as I said, in 1981, the, the planning board submitted information to the Suffolk County Planning Commission because the lot is located within 500 feet of Sunrise Highway. And that the town itself said to the, the Suffolk County Planning Commission that they would be requesting this covenant for no further subdivision of parcels 1 and 2. And then the county replied, basically saying that they confirmed that that covenant should be filed and said that it should be in a manner, it, no lot shall be subdivided or its lot lines changed in any manner unless authorized by the town planning board.
I know. I'm looking at it, and then you're, the applicant went and filed a more restrictive covenant. The commission just said no further subdivision without planning board authority, which is, which is actually routine. It's one of our standard boilerplate covenants. And then he went and said no further subdivision. So
Well, I guess the town.
Well, the applicant, a covenant is something, it's a declaration drafted and presented by the applicant. I don't think
Required by the town, no?
I, I don't, I don't think so. Why?
No, it's, Daphne, the declaration is filed by the applicant to the benefit of the town. I think what the board is asking you is to give some rationale as to why they should be waiving this covenant amendment right now.
Well, okay, so that's, I was getting to that, actually. So when you look at the immediate area, okay, so let me go back for a second. So Lot 3, as I indicated, in the subdivision was a much larger lot and was allowed to have further subdivision according to the original file covenant. So that was filed as a separate map for just Lot 3 as Longview Knoll, which was filed in 1984. And that was a five-lot subdivision, which has lots with a minimum size of 0.9 acres, ranging up to 1.9 acres. So I submitted, Jackie, I don't know if you can bring it up.
Oh, what was it? The aerial?
The aerial of the immediate area showing the parcel.
Yes, it's in the beginning.
So yeah, okay, so this is the aerial highlighting the parcel. So when you look at the area on the GIS, the subject parcel is one of the last in the area to be developed. And the lot sizes on Shinnecock Hills Road and Longview Road in the vicinity of this lot, which is the other slide with the lot sizes, Jackie. They range between 0.4 acres. It's hard to see the lot lines, but I wrote in all of the lots, the sizes. Goes between 0.4 acres and 1.5 acres. So outside of the Longview Knoll area, lots are 1.9 acres in the maximum size. So subdividing this parcel would be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. It would not be any smaller than any of the parcels there. It would basically be in the same range of the majority of the parcels. This property is actually north of the area that's currently being reviewed by the town board for the development moratorium for the Shinnecock Nation. Notice about this was provided to the Shinnecock Nation also. The two lots that we would be proposing in our subdivision application would actually exceed our zoning, our R40 zoning. And as part of the building permit application, they, as I indicated, the owners have been working with the town engineer. They had to file a SWIP, and they also had to go through road review, which required them to do an amount of road repair. They had to cut some portions and repave them. And they had to also cut overgrown vegetation and do some cleanup of the road.
So that was for the house that's already built?
Correct.
Daphne, we, we had a public hearing in the room on the first floor.
She's saying, she's saying, Robin, that's what I just said. And what she's saying, Jackie Fenland said, it was a different application.
Yeah, that application is actually
The same issue, but a different application.
It was a different property completely.
Yeah.
Wow.
So
I just had
Daphne's found her niche.
Yes. People who build and come to the planning board after.
So as I indicated, there, there are no clearing restrictions. They could build a tennis court on that, that side of the property. They could build a pavilion. They could build an accessory apartment. They could do a number of things on that side. They're actually choosing to request to do a subdivision. And in order to do that, we would need to do this amendment to the covenant.
I understand. But I also just want to say for the record that Shinnecock Hills, though not all parcels are in the Aquifer overlay district, we've always tried to get, Dennis, as you remember this, tried to get clearing restrictions. And it looks to me like this, this whole lot, or lot that they wish, hope to exist, was clear cut. Shinnecock Hills is a very special environment.
Well, if there are no clearing restrictions, then the building department really can't enforce that. Like, there's no, you know what I'm saying? There's no format for there to be a clearing restriction. I mean, I understand that if this was going through a subdivision process, that you could request that.
Exactly.
But as you keep looking at that
This is a kind of subdivision process after the fact, and run around the subdivision process. So
And it's also archeologically sensitive. Has
The Long Island Railroad is actually right behind it. You can see it in the aerial. So, and there is a buffer of trees that is still intact between the railroad and the parcels. I mean, before we would submit a subdivision application, we could show a revised clearing limit. It's not completely clear cut. They did salvage a lot of the bordering vegetation.
Did any testing, this is archeologically sensitive area? Is that what we said?
Yes, that's one of the
And, and so this has all been disturbed now and stuff moved around. So if there were artifacts, these could be lost at this point? That's a question.
Theoretically, I guess, yes.
Okay.
So that was my point before, but Kathleen, you said there's no requirement and no restriction about clear cutting.
Not, not yet, Madam Chair.
So that means if this, there was archeological finds or any kind of preservation had to be done on this property, looking at these pictures, it has all been disturbed already. So we could have endangered this area.
That, that's really not, as I say, without, without legislation, our board has no control.
I understand that, but, but we have an applicant coming before us who wants now, okay, permission to divide this. And this is an archeologically sensitive, and we as, have to be sensitive to the community and the Shinnecock Nation.
Well, as you can also see in that aerial, as I said, this is one of the last parcels that's being developed in that area. The, the rest of it's fully developed. A lot of them are majorly cleared, almost entirely cleared. I I don't know.
But if you had a question, just an inquiry, maybe I'm missing something in the process. If they had come to us first, before they cut down anything or disturbed anything and said, I want to do a subdivision, we could have requested the, the archeological study. Am I right or wrong?
Yes, you could have.
We could have
Now I am precluded, now ordering that archeological study after the land has already been disturbed can diminish, okay, or our findings can be injured. It's, it's a little bit backwards, right? And, and damaging.
Robin, I, I don't, I don't see how they're going to be able to overcome the hurdle of creating an additional lot with that covenant in place. I don't, I don't see it.
Yeah, I'm having a lot of problems with this. I agree with you, Dennis. I'm having a lot of problems on, but I'm just really having a problem with, with, with the order that this was done.
I totally agree with you, Robin. It's, it's okay. I did it, so now let me do more.
Yeah.
And start with, what can I do?
Right. Because if they came to us and said, I want to divide, subdivide this property, we have a covenant, we want to amend the covenant, we could have done the testing to make sure that it was archeologically, that there wasn't, you know, an issue, the sensitivity. We could have worked with them on it. Now we're looking at property that's cleared and being told, I can put, do anything I want with this property. You can, but you cannot subdivide or sell two houses.
No one's selling two houses.
No.
It's possible until there's a subdivision.
Right.
But again, there's, there's nothing precluding them from clearing the property. The, the structure that has been constructed will comply with R40 zoning if the line is drawn down the middle of the parcel.
And if it isn't?
If it isn't, then they have the ability to do a number of other structures on the part that's already cleared. So it's either a tennis court or some other accessory use, or it's potentially another home.
Well, it couldn't be another home, because you couldn't have two houses.
It could be if we proceed with the subdivisions. That's what I'm saying.
I'm saying if either all of those accessory type uses or another lot. Right. But if you can't subdivide, because you could have come to us and said, I want to subdivide. And then we could have done the archeological studies and we could have done everything. Now
Well, Robin, we wouldn't have gone, done the archeological studies until we amended the covenant, including subdivision. And they haven't really gone to that step. That's a big hurdle to get over, amending that covenant.
I agree with you. But I'm, I'm concerned of the fact that the, the property's already been destroyed or disturbed.
But are we going around in circles?
What, Gloria, I didn't hear?
I feel like we're going around in circles.
We are. So it's is I, I think you've heard from the board, Daphne. Is there anyone, Charles, anyone from the Shinnecock Nation or anyone else wanting to speak to this?
Not that I know of. I will, there's no one from the nation here, but
So
If anyone wants to speak, they can unmute their mic.
Okay, doesn't, doesn't look like it, Daphne.
Right. So you're saying the onus is on me to, to tell you basically what I've already explained. I did go through the entire file. There is very limited information. It seems as though the planning board of the town is who originated the request for the no further subdivision. They requested the Suffolk County Planning Commission to review, and they also agreed to the same clause, and that's what prompted the approval of the conditions for the covenant, which is shown here in the staff report that Jackie has up right now. No further subdivision of parcels 1 and 2. And then the planning board, Suffolk County Planning Commission, as you see, also said, no lot shall be subdivided or changed in any manner unless authorized by the planning board.
Do you have any additional documentation from the county, from the Suffolk County Planning Commission that would shed some light onto why they took that position?
Well, I would imagine it was just to mimic the town that they, they weren't going to argue with what the town was requesting because they, they agreed with it. There's the next thing in the file that I submitted. Wait a second. Uh wait a second. There's really, there's not a lot of information.
There never is in these early maps.
Oh, it's nineteen eighty one, right?
Yep.
Yeah, basically, it's uh on November twentieth of nineteen eighty one, and Jackie, I think I submitted this to you. There's a letter to Thomas Gill, I guess who was the attorney who was working on this.
I think I have it up, is that it, Daphne?
Yeah. Um. Okay, so the resolution was approved by all members of the board. Uh the South Southampton Town Planning Board in its consideration of the minor subdivision of Oceanside Enterprises referred said map to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Uh whereas the the planning commission approved the map at its regular meeting November fourth nineteen eighty one with reconditioned and that whereas the town planning board makes the following findings, that according to the town's subdivision regulations, any lot line changes will require a revised minor subdivision and must be approved by the planning board. Moreover, a covenant has been submitted for no for no further subdivision of parcels one and two, and that any further subdivision of lot three will require approval of the planning board. Uh the property must meet with their Department of Health requirements. And the planning board recognizes they are the sole agency with responsibility and authority to determine and require covenants in regard to the subdivision approval.
Daphne, my question is, it's unusual to submit an application to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. If this were to come into us for a subject, two lot subdivision, we would not refer it out to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. So I'm trying to find out what was it that triggered the referral?
Right, and I indicated it was because it's within five hundred feet of of County Road twenty seven.
Uh and actually, Jackie, we we might also still refer it to the Suffolk County Planning Commission because it's um still within five hundred feet of that roadway and the railroad and Montauk, you know. So depending, there's geography, like a radius of five hundred feet around county entities, which are roadways, and also the railroad, um so we may in fact uh send this to the county at this point in time as well.
Okay.
That you're saying if we approve it?
Well, a normal subdivision in this area, if it had jurisdiction within the five hundred feet of the railroad or County County Road thirty nine, we would in fact refer it at this point in time as well as it was historically.
Okay, but I'm just asking procedurally, would it, would we have to approve the amendment of the covenant first? And then it goes to Suffolk Suffolk County Planning Commission?
We generally only refer uh to the Suffolk County Planning Commission at the final application. So you would either have to issue the pre-up report or request that a referral be sent at the pre-application stage. Normally, they don't comment at the pre-application stage because the planning board is kind of working through the design and the subdivision yield, et cetera.
But but we have a covenant amendment has to be done first, before you get to that point.
Uh the covenant amendment has to be done prior to approval.
Okay, that's the question I'm asking.
So I think you're asking that after, if you were to approve the covenant amendment, then what we, I would then submit a pre-app for the two lot subdivision. And then Jackie's indicating at the final stage of that is when it would go to the Suffolk County Planning Commission.
Okay.
Jackie?
Correct.
And so what we're talking about in nineteen eighty one went to the Suffolk County Planning Commission because of its proximity to a major roadway and a railroad.
Yes.
So it still sits in that.
Yes.
And that distinct location.
Yes.
Okay, well, um. If there's no people who are speaking to this, I think the planning board has weighed in with several questions, Daphne, and um I would ask for more information from the commission.
Can I have one question? I guess this is of the attorney, Kathleen. Is there a hierarchy of authority between the Suffolk County Planning Board and the town, Southampton Town Planning Board? Does one supersede the other in any way, or is it just an equality or not even mentioned?
You know, you know, John, not in this circumstance. Um I appreciate what you're saying, but this is this is the jurisdiction of the planning board. It's the planning board's covenant um that you're that Daphne's seeking to amend. So certainly, you want to look at um why the Suffolk County Water Authority um wanted this on there or conceded to also having it on there. But at the end of the day, it falls within your purview to decide you're either going to allow this to be amended or you're not.
All right, so it stays, still stays with us, that's the point.
Well, definitely, which isn't to say, which isn't to say again that it won't be referred to them if you allow the covenant amendment and then it goes further for subdivision. But certainly at this point, it's wholly within your jurisdiction.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of, thank you.
Uh that letter that I referenced from November twentieth nineteen eighty one, uh number three, under the planning board makes the following findings, says that the Southampton Town Planning Board recognizes that they are the sole agency with the responsibility and authority to determine and require covenants in regard to the subdivision.
Okay. So are there any further comments? If not, we're going to close with a thirty day written comment period.
I'll move it.
Moved by Dennis.
Second.
Second by Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most extensions, um there are six in favor, one absent.
Thank you.
Daphne.
Thank you.
Number three, Fanning Avenue.
Uh oh, sorry, I can read the notice.
One moment, Jackie, please, we have noticed, Madam Chair. Um and again, for the record, the applicant's representative has submitted an affirmation that the property was reposted and letters were sent to adjacent property owners advising them of this evening's planning board meeting via video conference.
Great, thank you. And who is reading the posting?
I will, I have it, Jackie.
Mm hmm.
Uh please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be had by the planning, uh town, the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, March twenty sixth, two thousand twenty, at six P M prevailing time at Southampton Town Hall at one sixteen Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the pre-application entitled forty five Fanning Avenue. The preapplication consists of a subdivision plan with two lots on a thirty eight thousand five hundred and thirty eight square foot parcel situated in the R twenty zoning district within the hamlet of Hampton Bay is located at forty five Fanning Avenue, Suffolk County Tax Number number nine hundred dash two sixty three dash six dash nine point one and nine hundred dash two twenty eight dash one dash seventeen point one by order of the planning board of town Southampton, Philip Keats Secretary.
Okay, is someone here representing the application?
Uh yes, I am. Mark Schiffer, so good evening, everybody.
Mark.
Can I stop now? Or?
Charles needs to, oh, there you are.
Yeah, he's up.
He's up.
You're there, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, very nice, so good evening, everybody, and um great meeting so far. Uh on, um so I think, Jackie, can you maybe share the screen or should I share my screen?
Uh I can share the screen.
Okay, so do you have a plan, I think, uh C one hundred?
Uh yes, let me get to it.
Right, so.
These are the aerials, and this is C one hundred?
Yeah, C one hundred, and the.
This is a little clearer.
Yeah, this is a little clearer. So um on the, at the bottom of the screen here, you have the existing condition of the, that we have. The parcel that we are talking about, uh are two parcels right here. The parcel to the south is a uh is this lot, actually, the lot number nine is made out of two parcels, one which is approximately nineteen thousand square feet and the other one here also another nineteen thousand square feet. And then we have another right of way here, uh which is a ten feet wide and which goes all the way uh almost to Brattle Hill Road. So in this case, the property, those two properties are uh share the same ownership. And um the co- the the request here is to combine uh it's to create here a lot, which is a twenty thousand square foot lot. And here create another lot, which will be approximately twenty one thousand two hundred, which will front on Stonewood Lane through the the accessway here. The the balance of the accessway further past that property will then be abandoned and given to the properties on either side. So we we are basically creating uh two conforming lots uh in a, in a residential neighborhood. And the idea here is to uh build two uh four or five bedroom homes uh in this neighborhood uh with their own access, it would be full compliance with all of the zoning regulations. So we were, um you know, I think it's a it's a fairly simple application, you know, you can see here, so the the present uh the present property at forty five Fanning Avenue has a house on it, which is approximately a thousand square feet here, and uh it's just adjacent to a town uh, you know, drainage area for the Sherwood Hollow subdivision. So you, you know, so. So we have reached out to all of the neighbors, uh all of the feedback so far has been positive. Uh you know, they have asked us to put a fence on the, on the, along the western side of the property, uh which is to which uh it's not an issue.
So that small house that's existing would be torn down?
No, the concept would be, in this case, at at this time, uh it's a Sears house, it's a small house, it's a thousand square feet. The concept is to really keep it possibly as a uh an accessory apartment. Uh we have developed uh preliminary plans for the two lots. Right, so this is uh uh yeah, it's this, if this is the lot that would be fronting Fanning Avenue, that's a twenty thousand square foot lot, where this is the existing house right here, and then we would add another house um right here in the back.
I I thought I heard you say you would be building two new houses, that's.
Well, the, that's one house here and then another house on the other lot on Stonewood Avenue. That's the, this is the proposed lot that would front Stonewood Avenue. Uh there would be a one house here with a detached garage and the pool here.
How do you propose having two houses on one lot?
Thank you.
No, 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 there's not two houses on one lot.
You said you're keeping the Sears house.
Oh, yeah, on the Sears house, the Sears house would be an accessory apart, it's an accessory house. But this is not, that decision is not really being uh, it's not the application in front of the right now that we're making, the application right now is just to subdivide uh into two properties. But here, we we think we'd like to keep the the Sears house, it's a nice house, it's a thousand square feet, it's a two bedroom house. Uh there's no, uh if we could build another house, but still within the lot coverage.
Well, for an accessory structure, for one thing, you need a thirty thousand square foot lot minimum. And you need, uh the property has to be owner occupied, but we don't really have to consider the second house. If you, we can create that lot with the Sears house.
Yes.
And then you can try and get your second house, either through zoning variance or some other.
Exactly.
But we, we're not going to, in fact, we should, if if the Sears house is going to remain, we don't even want to consider that second house, that should be, really be removed from the uh, from the map.
Yeah, if you, yeah, I I understand exactly, yes, I understand exactly what you're saying, yes. Right now, the 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 application is to subdivide in two lots, whether we would, the Sears house is a, you know, it's a masonry foundation, it's on its last legs. Uh you know, personally, I have a little bit sentimental values attached to it because I think it's a cute house. But you know, it's not really a you know, something that has any value per se.
Before we sign the map, I mean, no, we could sign the map with this, with the house, but you wouldn't be able to build another house unless you tore it down or, you know.
Exactly, I understand.
Okay, um is there anyone in the waiting room, Charles?
Yes.
I'm I'm checking, yeah, yeah, go ahead, you can speak.
Uh hi, yes, we are Mr. and Mrs. Matthew Stangle. We uh own the property adjacent to forty five, we're at forty three Fanning Avenue. Uh forty five is adjacent to us on the east side and on the north side of our property. Um what we have been told is that the intent was to keep the original home that were owned by our former neighbors and build two new homes behind us, including a pool. So I, we do have questions, because if it's two more five bedroom houses, how many bathrooms and cesspools and drywells for this one parcel that is adjacent to us on two of our three sides?
Right, so here, um there's the plans, the plans to further develop the property are are not firm, have not been firm, there would be definitely be two lots. And whether uh with a new h- house on the, on the lot for uh fronting Stonewood Avenue, there definitely would be a new house there. And whether there would be a, whether we would keep the Sears house on forty five Fanning Avenue or uh rebuild and tear it down, rebuild a new house or file an application uh in front of the Z B A to be able to consider it as an accessory structure, that's up in the air, it's not in front of this board or this, of this application right now.
Okay, well. The the two lots. But when you first met my husband, you said you were going to cut down some trees and build a house. And since then, we've seen the entire lot cleared, not a tree left, and then discussion of building two houses. So as property owners here for the last twenty five years, where the property sizes in this neighborhood are all relatively large and the same, this is really going to cut up the neighborhood.
No, we are, no, we are actually, the lots that we are proposing, one will be twenty thousand square feet and the other one will be twenty one thousand square feet. So they're actually uh both conforming and on the larger side, uh you know, compared to the other lots in the neighborhood. If you look at the, you know, it's going to be on the much you know, this person right here on Stonewood Avenue, her lot is only ten thousand square feet.
No, dear, we're next to you, we're forty three.
No, no, I understand, I understand, I I've met you, I've met your husband and I think I've met your mother in law.
You look up the street, basically, all the lots are fairly big.
Yes, they're all of a nice size.
You're trying to change the neighborhood.
Uh well, I would respectfully kind of disagree there. I think that the lot next to, uh just to the east of us, east of forty five Fanning Avenue, you have two my lots that are really, really minute lots.
I agree, and those are, all of them, those are very different from the rest of the neighborhood.
But the other one also, the other one further down. And and the the lot that we would create would be very, very similar to your lot. It's twenty thousand square feet, you guys are similar to your lot. And it was two parcels, I mean, what we are really, uh we are really going back to the original because this property was actually two parcels. And when you look at the history of the the property, I'm just going back to the way it was because there was a time that the person who owned forty five Fanning Avenue then bought the property behind. But.
Yes.
We're we're going back to the, to how it was before.
And those parcels have been completely cleared?
Yes, sir.
Not one tree standing.
Not one tree standing.
No, I I'm not, there are trees in the property.
It's kind of like his property down by the water, where he cleared off a whole lot.
Are there clearing restrictions on the property?
No.
There are now, okay.
Okay, um is there someone else waiting to speak?
We have, uh we have another neighbor that can participate in this, but she's fairly old and she's not equipped to do Zoom meetings.
Yep.
And and then we have a neighbor, Kathy, behind us that.
Same thing.
Same thing. And I'm surprised the other neighbor across the other side of the lot isn't saying anything because they seem like they were upset too. In fact, a lot of people on the other side of the cul-de-sac are kind of upset with the whole situation.
They're gonna have, they're gonna have thirty days to, can they send a letter in? Because we're gonna keep the written comment. Because we're gonna keep the written comment period open for thirty days.
No, I mean, I, if I may, you know, I have reached out to Mr. Stengel, I've reached out to his brother, I've reached out to all of the, most of the neighbors, I have met with most of the neighbors. And, uh, actually, I can say that it has been positive. Uh, some even neighbors have offered to, um, write letters in support of this. You know, we are absolutely enhancing the neighborhood. The house that will be built, uh, fronting on Stonewood Lane will be a beautiful, nice house. In completely in, uh, you know.
Are these rental, summer rentals or? Are you looking to sell these houses?
So, okay, so the only way this two houses going up is if one house comes down, is that correct?
That's correct, so far, yes, yes.
So far, okay.
Well, unless there's a ZBIA application that gets filed and then you will have an opportunity to, to speak at that point.
I think we're going to reach out to our neighbors and.
Thank you for the application.
I have reached out to all of the neighbors, many that have come to my office, we've gone through the plans with them and.
Okay, well, you think, um, you have thirty days to, uh.
Submit letters.
Submit letters, so tell your neighbors, um, to, to proceed that way, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, if there are no more questions from the board, we can close this application with a thirty-day written comment period?
Motion.
Motion by Dennis.
Second.
Second by Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six in favor and one absent. Now, let's move on to number four, Watermill Land. I've lost my screen.
We can see you, Jackie.
I can't see anything.
Oh, we see you.
I'll just note for the record, we do have jurisdiction on this. And again, the applicant has submitted an additional affirmation indicating that the property was reposted with letters sent to the adjacent property owners indicating that a meeting would be held this evening via video conference.
Jackie, are you, are you paying the application?
Since this was adjourned, there's no need to reread the notice.
Okay.
Okay, so then I guess I'm up.
This Jackie? So this is the property?
Yeah, they're up.
Yes, Kathy Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Plan for the owners, the Rothmans.
I think they're controlling it.
So this is the property you were thinking about earlier.
Okay.
I was last before you on January twenty-third.
Yep.
Jackie asked me to give you, uh, an update as to what transpired at the last meeting and, uh, where we're at.
Uh, can you also read the aerial?
Yes.
Okay, so at the January twenty-third meeting, we were going through the four items listed in the covenant. And I can read them if you like. So number one is no additional overhead utility pull shall be erected on lots one through four. Number two was that the, no time hereafter shall there be any further subdivision or modification to lots one through four as shown on the minor subdivision map of Watermill Land Corps, which is the reason that I'm before you.
Do you have, do you have a subdivision map we can see, Jackie?
Oh. Oh.
There are two alternatives.
I think she might mean of the whole Watermill Land Corps.
Oh, um, I do have it in the file, I don't think I have it here.
Okay.
This is lot one of the Watermill Land Corps subdivision. It runs on Lower Seven Ponds Road to the south as you can see, and also Seven Ponds Town Road to the west. The other subsequent lots in the subdivision, just for your reference, all go further east along Lower Seven Ponds Road. And they ranged in sizes, lot one was eight point zero five acres, lot two was five acres, uh, lot three was eight point seven six four acres, and lot four, uh, which is the furthest east, is also six point five six acres. So this was one of the two larger lots in the subdivision. So, um, as I was saying, the third clause of the covenant is what we were discussing at the last meeting. Uh, I think that some members of the board had some questions because.
Do you have the covenant, we can look at it? Is, do you have it, Jackie? Can you put it up on the screen, the covenant?
I don't have it in, um, the Minute Track packet.
Well, I can read it because I have it right in front of me.
Okay.
It says that on parcels one through four, as shown on said minor subdivision map, the strip of land shown on the subdivision map of Watermill Land Corps as surface water quality control buffer shall be maintained in its natural state or in a state approved as sufficient by the Board of Trustees, the freeholders and commonality of the town of Southampton, New York, to prevent the lateral movement of silt and fertilizers into Flax Pond or the adjacent wetlands. So if some board members recall, they were asking for me to find out further information with regard to the town trustees' stance on, on this item. Okay, so, excuse me. So, uh, since the board made this request, the very next day on January twenty-fourth, I went to the town trustee's office and I filed a FOIL request with them. It took them a few weeks to get back to me, but the end result was that they could not find anything in their records with regard to this subdivision or the referral of this subdivision from the nineteen-eighties. So while that was all going on, I had a number of discussions with trustees Bill Pell and Eric Schultz with regard to the, the covenant and the subdivision that we're proposing. Uh, the board may remember, we were in the midst of the pre-application phase. We were about to have a pre-app report reviewed by the board when this issue of the covenant came up, which is what is bringing us to you now. So, um, all the conversations I had with the trustees, they, they basically told me they don't have jurisdiction over this right now because the Conservation Board exists to have jurisdiction over the movement of siltation, buffering of wetlands, et cetera. So they issued me a letter basically saying, and that's the letter, that they have no objections to the above- referenced subdivision as proposed. So I re-reviewed the subdivision file also in this time that I've been waiting to come back to see if I could find any additional information with regard to the reasoning behind the trustee item. And I had submitted copies of pertinent paperwork that I copied from the file, beginning with a letter from Gil Flanagan dated July first, nineteen eighty-seven, which included, uh, copies of formally submitted letters from December of nineteen eighty-three, January eighty-four, and, uh, January fourth and January ninth of nineteen eighty-four. And those letters discuss the ownership of the bottom lands of the streams connecting Flax Pond to the other portions of the Seven Ponds areas which traverse the subject property and the adjacent property to the northwest, which at the time was also owned by Watermill Land Corps. Jackie, do you have that, um, map that I gave you? I think I marked on it, that one, yes. So it's kind of difficult to see, but that area that I circled is actually a separate parcel from lot, my subject lot. And there was a question about the bottom lands because of those two culverts that cross from the, the, across the roads to connect to Seven Ponds, basically. And the trustees did claim jurisdiction over those bottom lands, including those streams, regardless of the fact that that was a single and separate parcel held by Watermill Land Corps that was not subject to the subdivision. So the trustees did confirm that ownership and this is the, that was the map that I wanted to give you. So basically, from that information, one could ascertain that since such efforts were taken during the subdivision process for the town trustees' opinion and ownership confirmation of the adjacent stream bottom lands and the town Conservation Board was not existing, uh, that the town trustees were cited in the declaration with the filed subdivision map. So as I previously submitted, the property comprised of three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and forty square feet or eight point zero five acres and contains, uh, extensive freshwater wetlands that were filed within a conservation easement. Per the Watermill Land Corps covenants and restrictions, it states that at no time hereafter shall there be any further subdivision or modification of lots one through four as shown on the Watermill Land Corps subdivision map. We reviewed the file and ascertained that the original clause two, I'm sorry. Yeah, the origin of clause two during the original process and submitted copies of the pertinent documents. Uh, it seems as though that no further subdivision was instilled by the Natural Resources Director at the time, back in nineteen eighty-seven, and that was in paperwork that I originally submitted as part of our request. So, uh, as I submitted previously, this property can yield two conforming lots to the CR eighty zoning district without taking into account the current wetland area. The cluster plan that we submitted with the pre-application submission depicts an extensive open space parcel to be dedicated to the town that would contain all the existing onsite wetlands and a portion of the buffering areas. Additionally, the existing cottage that's on the southeast side of the parcel has already been equipped with an innovative alternative onsite wastewater treatment system, which, um, would also be utilized. We'd also install an IA system on the second lot if it becomes approved. And the large vegetated buffer would remain intact. If it's naturally vegetated majorly, uh, there would be no, um, little to no re-veg necessary to have an adequate wetland buffer on this property.
So what's the buildable portion of this minus the wetlands?
What is the buildable portion? I have to find my map, hold on. Jackie, can you see that there?
Um, I can't, but I can go get it if you give me one moment.
Hold on, I got my map. I have the map that shows it, um. We can get two eighty thousand square foot lots. I think one lot is, it would be eighty thousand square feet if we did it in the standard plan. I have an eighty thousand square foot lot and an eighty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-four square foot lot. And that does not include the wetland boundary.
You're preferring clustering, right? Giving the, giving the wetlands to, uh.
The planning board, um, during the initial pre-application report, um, review, I mean, pre-application review last summer, said that you were leaning towards a cluster plan. This, I did find the yield plan in the file, this is the yield plan showing the conforming eighty thousand square foot lots.
Yeah, that was the one I was just looking at.
May I go back to the covenant, please? You just said that the trustees do not feel it's under their jurisdiction anymore, that the movement of silt is now under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Board. Do we have anything from the Conservation Board from this, on this?
We should have received a referral, uh, from them as part of the pre-app.
No, no, not pre-app.
Did we?
Uh, I can get it for you, sorry. Um, it wasn't part of the package for Minute Track, but give me one moment, please.
Excuse me for a second.
I have it, Jackie. In August of two thousand nineteen, the Conservation Board gave the following comments. Hold on. There's nine comments. You want me to read them all?
I apologize.
What's the gist?
Part of the Seven Ponds, town and state regulated freshwater wetlands. Flax Pond is attributable to Mill Pond in Mecca Bay, and it's located within the high priority water quality improvement zone. The tract contains regulated, town regulated wetlands. A section two ninety-two thirty-nine B referral is required. A southerly portion of the parcel contains a swale which periodically contains road runoff as evidenced by the water staining. However, the swale is not regulated as a wetland. The applicant submitted two alternative subdivision maps. Based on review, Conservation Board prefers the preliminary map last revised June twenty-sixth, which protects the majority of the required wetland buffers at open space. The June twenty-sixth map needs to be revised to ensure all portions of the proposed parcel lie within seventy-five feet of the east of the portion of the wetland boundary are protected as open space. Then they talk about the driveway we were gonna propose on Seven Ponds Town Road, saying that that driveway doesn't conform to the hundred-foot wetland setback, alteration of a drainage swale. Okay, native re-veg plan for disturbed portions, existing fence to be removed from the open space parcel, and an old dilapidated fence along, um, uh, Seven Ponds Town. And we want a soil profile, water profile. That's it, new test hole, I guess.
What's the soil profile?
A test hole.
Oh, okay.
So, Daphne? If we move forward with a cluster subdivision, your clients are proposing to dedicate the open space in the northern portion to the town, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, in that case, you know, if you, if you recall, the property has extensive road frontage on Seven Ponds Town. It would be, uh, it would be very desirable to put this property into public ownership. The prior owner was actually erected a fence, if you can imagine, along that stretch of road to, um, to prohibit public access and public, even public view shadow of the wetlands. But what we, one way to proceed is to not amend the covenant until the, to make the covenant as part of the conditional final approval. In other words, to go ahead and process the subdivision map, creating the one lot. And as part of the final conditional approval, um, that covenant would be amended. So to make sure that the eleventh hour, the applicant can't change their mind and say, no, we're gonna form an HOA to hold it privately. That, that would be my suggestion, to proceed that way. In other words, we could still process the subdivision application, you could go to the health department, but the modification of the covenant would be done on final conditional approval. Does that make sense, Jackie? You're muted. You're muted.
Jackie.
There you are, Jackie. No, you're muted.
Which Jackie?
Oh, Jackie LaFarr, uh, Jackie Felon. Felon.
You're.
You're muted.
You're muted.
She's muted, okay, so I think it's a good suggestion, Dennis.
Yeah.
Um, I have some serious questions about that second access road. It's going right into the buffer. I would certainly propose a joint driveway.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, those are, those are design guidelines.
Right, so, um, is there anyone, Charles?
Yes, me.
And who's me?
Identify yourself, please.
I'm here under Dorothy. Can you see me?
No, can't see you.
Hold on, start my video. There you go.
We got you.
Please, go ahead.
It's nice to see you guys. It's very refreshing that you actually remembered us from the last forward town meetings. This is my mom. You get to finally meet her. Yes, we are the freeholders on the other side. The one that Daphne actually keeps removing us from the, we're not actually part of that covenant, but we do own the other side of the pond. We are adjacent to their property, at 96 Seven Ponds Town Road. You probably remember me with hair.
So where did you get your haircut in this virus environment? I'd love to get one.
I had to do it myself. It was hell.
Coming right over.
But yeah, we just want to, we're back on here. And first of all, I'd like to bring up that, actually, I think Jacqueline, I saw her in the, she's the lawyer, correct?
No. I'm the planner.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I ran into your lawyer when I went to actually meet with the trustee lawyer, and we actually spoke about this issue, and I asked him to make a public meeting about our property. And I never got notified. Neither did me nor my mom ever get notified about anything to do with the trustees.
There was no meeting.
Concerning to me, Daphne?
There was no meeting.
I mean, he even said, because I actually went down like two weeks after the last meeting, and I took time out of my own, what mattered. I went down because we are really concerned about the ecological and historical parts of our property. And we don't, we're very uncomfortable because we live in a very interesting situation. There's only X amount of houses on this pond. If you subdivide that pond, or you subdivide one, you then for open up to be enabled to subdivide another, and then another. Now, how many houses do you want to put on this? That's my first question to you guys. Now, my second question is, and I'd love to talk to the Ecological Board because it looks like that hasn't actually gone through or been submitted. And I'd love to see that submitted and see what these, I guess, tests or whatever they have to do to allow this to happen before any of this can actually go in front of the Board.
Sir, could you actually reference your name for the record, please?
My name's Robert Winnicky. I go by Junior. And this is my other Dorothy Winnicky. We are the freeholders of 96 Bond Town Road.
Thank you, just for the record, thank you.
Yes, and then also another thing Daphne brought up. I mean, she keeps talking, but in 1989, I believe, in part of the covenant, which I learned at the last meeting, they did actually ask to put a second structure on the property that existed on a existing foundation for the purposes of renting it, so the original...
No, that was on a different lot within the subdivision.
Yeah, it was within your subdivision, which is still next to ours. You know, so there is actually an opening of a second house without subdividing.
That was on a different lot. That was not on this property. That was on a different lot within the same subdivision.
I drive by, hey, I see the, I see the old house over there on my left. I do, Daphne.
If we could just address your comments to the Board, please, sir, this, I know it's a little different. But if this is not meant to be a discussion.
Our concerns and questions, and just to put it out there, is, one, if it's unsubdivisible lot for ecological purposes, why is it being subdivided? If it is a unsubdivitable lot for historical purposes, why is it being subdivided? You know, I mean, it seems like, and there is actually, if you would read the covenant, I just don't understand how a covenant can be overturned at this point. Because, I mean, from what I've looked up in law, there's a matter of, trying to remember exactly how it went. The people that actually wrote the covenant, their dependence need to be part of the releasing of the covenant? Is that not correct?
I think maybe what you mean is that it's binding on the heirs and successors, and you're absolutely right about that. And that's what this Board is here to consider, whether or not they should allow that to now be lifted. So you're doing exactly what you should be doing in making these comments to the Board and asking them to consider the rationale in doing so.
I mean, we really don't know what we're doing. We're just trying to protect our property.
So he was referring to a property with two structures on it. That's lot three, which is two lots over, which is the largest lot in the original subdivision. That was 8.764 acres. And the Planning Board did allow for them to maintain an existing two-story house and cottage.
Correct, but they did not allow them to subdivide.
There wasn't a request for a subdivision, to my knowledge.
There you go.
It was a pre-existing non-conforming situation that they had two dwelling units on the property.
I mean, part of, part of my concern, and I don't know if this is valid, when they bought the property, they knew about the covenant. If they wanted to release the covenant, they should have done that before the purchase of the property, which is within the law. Am I wrong?
I don't think that someone would have the authority to request to remove a covenant unless they own the property.
They absolutely would. You don't have to own the property to request it before purchase.
Yes, you do. I'll answer that one. Yes, you do.
Um, hold on, I got that actually on my phone.
Perhaps it could have been a condition of the contract. It could have been a condition of the contract of sale, perhaps, if they wanted to do it at the contract. Your point is, your point is taken, is, and we appreciate that, which is that they were on notice when they purchased this property, that this covenant existed, for sure.
Yes, and as you can see now on the map, you can see our property, which actually does have two-thirds of the water of the pond. So you have to understand how important it is that we protect that.
Okay.
Mom, would you like to say anything? Is that okay if my mom speaks?
Just state her name.
Dorothy Winnicky.
Yes, go ahead, Dorothy.
I'm concerned about the fact of the water quality of the pond. I've, I've been a big conservation lover my whole life, and I was happy when I got, had a chance to purchase this property because I felt I could help preserve something that was unique. And, you know, now I feel like I might be wrong, but I feel that we're no longer, because, I mean, I went before the Environmental Board when I purchased the property.
In 94.
94. The covenant we put on ours, and I don't know if it's the same one as you have, but about, is with New York State, not only with the, because of the wetlands water. I, I had, when I wanted to put gravel down, I had to have New York State come in to make sure that that was, you know, okay, that it wouldn't affect the water quality of, that was just my driveway, you know, and it was not a, it was just a loose gravel driveway. But New York State had to come in and inspect it to make sure it's okay. So I'm, does that not, does New York State not also have jurisdiction over these adjacent properties?
They have jurisdiction over the wetlands portion. The portion that's wetlands.
To answer her question, I think she's asking, would the New York State DEC weigh in on this subdivision? And the answer to that is actually no. New York State DEC does not review subdivisions. They will review the individual residential lots upon completion of the subdivision. We're proposing with the cluster plan to preserve 65.56% of the property, which equates to 5.278 acres, both of which is wetlands and a large buffering area to the wetlands, which would otherwise be required by the Town Conservation Board, not necessarily the state.
So you're saying you're preserving seven acres?
No, we're 5.278 acres of the 8.05.
Okay, so that answered my prior question.
Yeah.
What was, how much of it is buildable? So it's about...
So it's less than three acres.
Less than three acres. Okay.
Because I believe when we built our property back in, I think we started in 2000, we bought in 94, there was a requirement that we had to have 3.5 acres to be able to put a residence on the property, and it couldn't be more than a three-bedroom home because of the water issue. I'm just questioning, is it different because it's the other side of the road? Because we had to have 3.5 per house.
Should be the same zoning district. It's already...
Zoning district that close? I don't know. It's just a question.
It should be the same zoning district, I would imagine, which is CR80, so it's two-acre zoning, basically.
Right, and I believe we have a three-point, I'd have to actually look at our, our thing because we pay, we have eight, I think, 7.8 acres. Possibly eight, close. But I believe that we actually have to pay full tax on X amount, and then because it's wetlands, we get a deferment to our taxes to make it affordable. But I believe there was a zoning of 3.5 when we...
The zoning, the zoning appears to be the same. It's CR80 for both properties.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm just wondering, what is that zoning law?
That's two-acre zoning.
It is two acres.
Yeah, not three acres. It's two acres.
That's interesting, because I believe my neighbors, the Gasola, I think they said they needed like 2.5 or something to that effect, yeah. I'm not 100% sure. Like I said, I'm going on, you know, hearsay.
Yeah, I thought it was four acres from the beginning, but...
I mean, maybe the laws have changed from when we originally signed our permit.
Do you have any additional comments on this particular property?
Well, I'm, okay, my comments are, I'm afraid that if they subdivide the property, they will allow another house on the pond. That is my biggest concern. And I believe that that comes into the ecological, the historical, and the environmental. And I know you're saying DEC State. I mean, what did the wetlands preservation of Southampton say?
We're not really prepared to weigh in on regulations at this point. But just to take your comments, we can't really answer questions about the code or setbacks or zoning or...
And, and we would be happy to submit something in writing as well within that.
Exactly what we'd like for you to do. The 30-day written comment period, so you get all of your, your thoughts and your issues down and send it in to us.
We would love to.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Hey, we appreciate your time.
Appreciate your time as well. Is there anyone, Charles, waiting there for this application?
Just to kind of comment on what he was saying about this being on the pond, the development would not be near the pond. This property, really the only portions of this property that front on the pond are the wetland area.
Yeah, we can see that. That's pretty clear.
Okay.
So, um, hearing that there are no other speakers to this, can I entertain a motion for 30-day written comment period?
Motion to close with a 30-day written comment.
Yeah, by Dennis, moved by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
Extensions, I think there's still six here, one absent. Okay, so 30-day written comment period.
Thank you.
For your time.
Thank you. Number five, Peconic Paddler.
Madam Chair, we do have jurisdiction, and again, for the record, the applicant has provided proof that they reposted the property and letters were sent to adjacent property owners advising them of this evening's Planning Board meeting via video conference.
Okay, is this a continuation or not?
It's not. It's really the first public hearing. We had a pre-app, we had a pre-app on it. I'll read the notice for you. Please take notice that in accordance with the Town Code of the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, March 26th, 2020, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan wetlands permit application entitled Peconic Paddler, which proposes the redevelopment of the property with a one-story, 4,212-square-foot building for restaurant use and boat rental sales use on a 42,001-square-foot property currently improved with the one-story building used for boat and rental sales situated within the Highway Business Zoning District and Riverside Overlay District R01, located at 89 Peconic Avenue in the Hamlet Riverside, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-118-2, -2, by order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Is there an applicant's representative here?
Yes.
Yes, Steve Naroda from Harris Designs here.
Good, Steve. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Steve Naroda with Harris Design. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And as Anthony was just stating, you know, the property is located on the west side of Peconic Avenue, on the south side of the Peconic River. It sits within the context of Riverside Overlay District, the historic downtown riverhead, the Grangeville Park, and the Peconic River and Peconic Estuary. The applicant currently owns the building that sits on the site now, the Peconic Paddler. He completely embraces the environment he's in, and his business is geared toward creating access to the river with rental of kayak and stand-up paddleboards. As Anthony stated, the proposed building is a restaurant, approximately 4,200 square feet. And its access is provided from Peconic Avenue with the circular drive, one way in, one way out, with ADA parking in the front, and then parking area situated on the south side of the building. The, a low nitrogen IA system is proposed for the east side of the building between Peconic Avenue and the building. It's not shown currently on this plan, but it is in the works. Parking requirements, we meet the requirements. There's, you need 21 spaces, and we provide 22 spaces. The structures that are proposed meet the, conform to the setbacks for both DEC and Town Code. We've received comments from the Conservation Board, which we embrace and we're committed to providing all the items that are stated in the memo that we've received. We're currently working on a native revegetation plan or native buffer plan between the building and the, the park and the river, and, and also native planting plan for the entire property. I think that's about it from my end. I'm here to field any questions from the public.
Okay, the, the Board's pretty familiar with the application, that we've seen it and discussed it. Is there anyone in the public waiting room wishing to speak? Hearing none, anyone on the board have something more to say, or any questions of Steve? Okay, we're gonna close it then, Steve, with a 30-day written comment period.
Motion to close, 30-day written.
Motion, motion by Dennis to close, and 30, second by Phil, all in favor? Opposed, extensions, six in favor, one, one absent. That brings us to the end of our virtual public portion, first and only, I think it went very well. Thank you to the staff for doing this seamlessly, and to Charles.
Thank you.
So I'll entertain a motion to, to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent. Good night, everyone.
Stay well.